All right. Good afternoon. We are here for the regular work session of the Neutrona County Commissioners. It's Tuesday, October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Our first appointment is with Anna Kinder, the Health Department, for a facility update.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much for your time this afternoon. We're here today to provide an update on where we're at with the building, just to give you some perspective of what's going on. As you may remember, Brandon has been with MOA, has been a significant partner for several years. July of twenty-one is what we figured out. So it is very exciting to be where we are today. So it's our hope that we can present some visuals for you to understand. And then, you know, this is the beginning process of letting people know what's going on. If you watch Facebook, you'll see a lot of commentations, comments about what is that big thing and all those other stuff. So this is the beginning of letting people know. So I'll turn it over to Brandon, and we have Logan from Sampson Construction here as well.
Thank you, Commissioners. Again, the intent today is just to kind of update you on the progress to date. We're now well under construction, and the project's going according to plan so far. And so we just want to update you on the final exterior renderings and kind of walk through where we're at in the construction of the exterior and the site work that's happened. And then give you a presentation on the latter half of this, what the interiors will feel like. Again, recognizing this is a public building, and we want to share the information as it moves forward. There you go. So this view here is from the northwest entrance off of Conwell. As people are approaching the building, they will see this view as they turn into the parking lot. I'll orient you here in a minute with an overall site plan. But this is the final exterior elevation from the west. The overall view here, as you can see, just, oh, I can't point at it, but that drive aisle that's coming off of Conwell, right there at Tenth Street, that was the view that I just showed you as you enter the site. You can see the Health Department vehicle parking is located on the north end, adjacent to the cemetery. The back of house area is on the north side for staff parking and access to the training room. And then guests and staff parking are on the west and south sides of the building. And then the front entrance is facing due west. A view from the southeast aerial here, you can see kind of the back side of this. This is over the Lifesteps Campus, hovering above that, looking down towards the site. You can see the Rapid Response Drive-Thru Clinic. This is a product of the experiences during COVID and any other sort of event that we might have from a public health concern standpoint, where people can get services and treatments from the outside of the building and never have to enter the building and potentially introduce any illnesses to the inside of the building. It's set up with both an interior and exterior drive aisle. This will also afford staff the ability to load their vehicles as they go to serve out in the public on an interior loading dock area or a drive-through area, so that if there is inclement weather, they have some protection. This is on the leeward side of the, of the building, and so it does protect all of these patrons that are waiting in line and the staff from the wind and the snow that's blowing across. View again from the northeast side of the building, looking down to that drive aisle. So you can see there's additional parking there, again, for the staff and then overflow parking in the event that they have to staff up for particular event days. Here's a side-by-side view of the overall aerial, looking straight down on the building. And this photo, this aerial was taken about ten, twelve days ago, showing the progress of the foundation work. The whole, a large portion of the building has a crawl space, a mechanical access crawl space. And so you can see those walls down on the south end there. What is under the operations wing, where, sorry, under the operations wing on the southwest corner there? And then the main circulation spine and public areas, and then the clinic there on the right hand, on the east side of the building there. And I believe, Logan, we should be done with that within the next ten days all the way to the north. About ten days, the foundations will be completely done. What you don't see here is the extensive site work that has been happening as we've, we've roughed in all of the storm sewer and all the, the utilities have been put into place and roughed into the site. And then you can see in this photo, the retaining wall along the east edge that's underway. I think this is about four courses taller now from when this photo was taken. But you can see the amount of work going on on the site from each of these angles. Any questions on the construction so far? Going back to just the, the renderings here, this is from the southwest corner. This is that operations area where a large portion of the staff will be housed, with the exception of the clinic and the finance departments. But this is the wing to the southwest, as the approach will be there. This is the staff entrance from the south, and then you can see the good, clear signage on the south end of that building. The signage will face Twelfth Street and be readily visible as people pass by from an elevated signage perspective. Just through this floor plan in here, this is the overall floor plan at thirty-five thousand, just under thirty-six thousand square feet. That includes all of the operations wing at the southwest corner there, the training and public access areas down that central north-to-south spine, the clinic area on the eastern half, and then the storage and rapid response area in the northeast corner. This is a view as you would walk in the front door to the reception area. You can see the circulation is set up to allow for direction, directional signage going east or west or north or south, excuse me, and directing people to whichever part of the building that they would need to have whatever services that they're there for. There's a little different tilted view. We do have two different waiting areas. This view is the north waiting area with the reception, and there's one just off the view here to the right. With the idea that we're giving flexibility depending on people's ailments or the types of services that they're seeking, we can separate those people and so that they can have the most efficient experience with the clinic. And then there's some public restrooms just beyond there. You can see the kind of coffee bar reception area to the north on that back wall. There's restrooms tucked behind there. This is the south waiting area, and you can see the entrance into the clinic. Again, depending on what types of services they're getting, they'll be directed to go one direction or the other. And then you can see to the far right of this image, there's the training rooms and some waiting area outside of those training rooms. And across the hall from those is the environmental health breakout rooms, where if you were going to get a septic permit, you might meet with environmental health, just to the right of this view. This is the flexible training room. There's two, two large training rooms that can be subdivided or one bigger training room. And we have flexible furniture. We're actually planning on reusing furniture from the existing facility to accommodate this type of training space. And then there's this view, which is the boardroom, which is on the north half, and an additional training room that is one larger space. But this will also house CPR training and other community training events. This view is down the office corridor. Sorry, I forgot to mention, in the bottom right corner, there's a little red arrow that's orienting the view for each of these. If you're curious where we're at within the building. This is a view down the operations corridor, and you can see that there's even a window at the end of this. We've got a lot of good natural light. For those of you that have toured the existing facility, there's a lot of interior office spaces and cubicles that don't have any natural light. We've improved that in this new plan for the, for the staff to have consistent daylighting.
It also is beneficial for patients or clients to be able to see an end location of lighting. Your specialists actually recognize the importance of having a window out. So when they're walking down the hallway, it's not walking down into a dark space.
This here is the work, work area for environmental health. And so this is a crossover corridor between the two north and south sides of the operations area. On the right-hand side, you can see there's some breakout rooms, and these would be accessible to the public from the corridor and from staff from this back-of-house area, really trying to separate the public access and making sure that it's well-maintained in the center spine of the building. This is the staff print room and work area that's central to the operations wing of the building. And just beyond the view there, you can see there's some restrooms that are accessible for staff. Here's the view going in the opposite direction. Again, good natural daylight, as you can see in the left-hand side of this image. And then good natural light into that breakout room, you can see there, just beyond the countertop. There are multiple huddle rooms where staff can get together in groups of six or eight within their departments, and then also have the ability to have breakout sessions or one-on-ones with staff as necessary. This is a view down the clinic corridor, so this would be as a patient would enter the treatment area. Again, the, the window at the end of the corridor, as Anna mentioned, giving good natural daylight to this area, and there's a connection to the nurses station, which is right here. This gives three hundred and sixty-degree oversight of the three corridors that bisect here, and natural light is allowed into that corridor space. You can see the exam rooms and the office, offices off of there to the right. This is a view of one of the procedure rooms, showing the color and texture and the feel of the procedure room, storage, storage as well. And then this is one of the exam rooms, having the flexibility to have enough space as they have program awareness and posters for the different programs that they're offering and a nice, warm space for people to come to. This is a view of the staff lounge area with a mixture of different seating areas. As the staff looks to have breakout spaces and team-building activities, this, this space would be available for them. There's good natural daylight. Once again, there's a mixture of banquets and low and high-top seating. This is another view, looking back towards the actual kitchen area there on the right-hand side, really trying to make this a place where the staff want to come and engage. They can also come here if they want to get away from their cubicle or their office area and, and be able to have a break. And with that, this is again the overall aerial view, as you saw the progress on the construction. We're about halfway up and maybe three-quarters of the way through the foundation work. To date, everything's been going on and sometimes ahead of schedule. I'm going to speak for Logan a little bit. But so far, the construction schedule's gone really well, and everything's tracking as planned. Questions?
Great. Well, that last comment was one of my questions. You mentioned at the beginning that things are going generally according to plan. At the end, you're a little more specific about the scheduling, and so that's good news. And how are we doing on, and I know Mr. Schenk isn't here today, but how are we doing on budget?
You want me to answer or you want to answer? Everything from a payment application standpoint, from what was bid and contracted, everything is according to plan. There haven't been any overages. We're actually still looking for ways to save money on the project actively. Looking to, Logan and his team are pricing some alternates that we're looking to consider for substitutions to save money. And so we're still tracking at budget. And from a cost expenditure standpoint, nothing is before or behind what we had assumed.
Very good. And key remind us and the public for an estimated opening date.
Well, so the building, the plan to turn the building over is at the end of two thousand and twenty-five, and then we'll move in January, February, of twenty-six is the intent.
Great. Commissioners, other questions? Commissioner Frill?
I guess just off the presentation itself, and I guess it's more towards you, Anna. Is there a area in that building or room in that building? Not that we're ever going to go back to COVID and go through that again. But if we ever did go back through that, you know full well that you did daily briefings of everything as transpired. Do you have a broadcast room, if you will, for doing TV or social media updates?
Yes, we will be able to have that in either the boardroom or the meeting room space. Everything is going to be Zoom or Team Meets quality kind of things.
Yeah, all the IT and television and.
And phone. Everything will be in all of the rooms, even in the smaller huddle rooms that we have. We'll have the capacity to take your computer and plug it in and instantly be able to connect to the internet. So there will be places that are isolated, quiet, off the beaten path, that we wouldn't need to make accommodations for that elsewhere. But there is also a room that we can change on a dime for whatever is indicated, because as you know and remember, it was a constantly changing situation. The waiting room is definitely something in that regard where people can really spread out. As you know, right now, people were on top of each other, and it made it really difficult. I think you left a really good point about the drive-through. That was a best practice for us and very evidence-based, is a good way to get people through. So actually, Brandon has mentioned that other design activities are looking at that as possibilities, because it does make sense. You know, we talked earlier about contamination, if that would become a thing. But everything is meant so that there's like a double standard, so that no one can get in that could potentially be contagious, whether that's a biohazard, COVID, or heaven forbid, whatever else comes along our way. But yes, we would be able to accommodate that. We wouldn't probably call it like a, what we were at at the, our building, Emergency Operations Center, just because of the structure and the way it's built. We didn't need to go that route, but we definitely could become that if we had to.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Laird. I, I can't remember this. Probably, you probably already said it one time or another. Is all of the equipment you need and the furniture and all of that, is that part of the budget already?
Yes, it is.
Thank you very much.
I'm not seeing any other questions. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. And look forward to, you know, hearing from you again as we, you know, pass big milestones. So thank you, and thank you, Sampson, Logan.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Our next appointment is at one fifty-five. Do we, we can address another kind of scheduling issue with Michelle if, if, if you'd like, or we can move forward with cap and, and all that right now? Okay, let's, let's then defer a few minutes. It's scheduled for one fifty-five anyhow. Michelle, did you want to go over any scheduling items with us or any board vacancies with us? Okay.
So in the spreadsheet, you will see what vacancies we have coming up and who so far has applied that I've received applications for. And November eighth, I think, I don't have a calendar on me. I think November eighth is our first meeting in November, and that's where I have blocked out on the work session. Oh, the fifth. So November the fifth. We'll go on the Tuesday and September. And then obviously, that one could change depending on how many applications we have. Because the last one was like a two-hour block.
So what you're saying is that's both the deadline and the day we're setting for interviews, if I understand you?
You're right. I'm losing it. No. So November eighth, November eighth is the deadline, and then the next one, the seventeenth or whatever the next meeting is, will be our, is what I have blocked out.
Okay.
Nineteenth.
The nineteenth.
Nineteenth is what I have. I don't have my computer. So the nineteenth is where I have.
Interviews?
Yeah, interviews blocked out for November eighth is the deadline.
Okay, and that would give us enough time? That would give us enough time to process the interviews, set up interviews, and then make decisions before those positions expire at the, at your end?
Yeah, because I was just, when, um, next week, probably I'll start scheduling everybody starting before that nineteenth.
Do we have any? Good.
Now, I did not do cash per star, because that one was like almost nine hundred bucks. And when I did ask them, I couldn't get a number of how many teams we got. But during the last board interview, everybody that I scheduled when I locked up them, I was just like, hey, where are you doing that? It was, it was Oil City Facebook.
Do we have any other significant items scheduled for the nineteenth? I know you don't have your computer right in front of you. Do you remember anything off the top of your head? I don't, so I think we're going to have plenty of time.
Yeah. The only thing that we have at this time is the board interviews that I have on there, because I added those after I printed it, and then legal update, that's it.
Okay, so you think we can do all of the ones we need to do in two hours? Or it seems like we might need more than that?
You know, it's all going to depend on how many applicants, because last time we had a really great turnout. It all just depends on how many people.
Okay, well, we'll keep some flexibility. We'll have a minimum of two hours set for that. And we might add another thirty minutes, but.
Now, and then just as a reminder, the leading pest control, those are the things that have to be motorized to build out by the district that they live in. So, um, so that part will have to be done, and then they'll also have the application. Mike Layton, I don't know if you guys really need to interview him again, because his appointment wasn't active until July fifteenth of this year. So if you guys want to interview him again, that's entirely up to you guys. And you will notice that Joe Wyler is requesting to be reappointed, and he has to fill the two, the two terms. And I think it's the same story with, no, no, not the same story with Dean World. He's only served the one term.
Okay. Are there any questions for Michelle?
Then one more deal, and one we're going to have for cash for reentry. Those ones we will not be interviewing for, and then this position is for Robert Nelson. That one is, that one is for the position of Sheriff Harland. He just appointed somebody to go in his place.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Michelle.
I guess, I guess my question is, you know, the last few boards that we've interviewed for, we've actually not even done it until after, after the fact.
You mean after the expiration?
Yep. And I'm just wondering if, if that's something we have to do prior to the end of the year or, or not. So how many of these, how many of these boards meet monthly? Do you know?
Citizens Transportation Advisory Commission, that is one. I don't know if that one is monthly or if that's as needed. But I think the rest of them, and then the Board of Appeals, the Planning and Development Board of Appeals. I think those ones are, that one is as needed. And then I'm not sure on the, the Citizen Transportation, if that one needs as needed or if it's monthly. Do you remember, Steve? But that's, that's, that's one that everybody in the county has, like, one or two people appointed to it, mentally. I just can't remember now.
Would, would you mind checking on that for me? On what the schedule is for their meetings?
Do you want just monthly or do you want like?
Whether it's monthly, every other month, or whatever else, or every quarter or whatever. So I know some of the boards that we're on only meet once a quarter, and others meet once a month. And so just, I wasn't sure which, what, what they actually met. So it'd be nice to know just how fast we have to fill those positions to make sure to see how much time we actually have.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question procedure. I'm not, I remember on this airport board, I was on the board that interviewed Mr. Hendry, and that was when I took office. And that one expired before I took office. So if the issue is on any of these boards, if a person expires at twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-four, I think that the appointments ought to be made with whatever the new commission, for the new commission to make the decision. Because that'll be about the next day or two after that, so. Know that that would be appreciated by new commissioners to have a say-so and, and what's maybe binding on them.
So I'll respond. I think that it's interesting that I get a whiff of politics in this to keep Commissioner Steve Frill from voting on any of this and letting anticipated commissioner Casey Coats voting on any of this. And I, that kind of offends me if, if that sense that I'm getting is, is accurate. My, my feeling is it's best practices to have board positions filled before board vacancies are created and that that does the people the best government service. So my, we, we will have the interviews on the seventeenth. And if the board wants to vote on whether we make the appointments before the calendar year, we can do that. But I, I would rather not just play politics and let the, let the people's positions expire and leave these boards kind of in a lurch, not knowing, you know, when and how to plan. So we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. Michelle, did you have anything else on board appointments? Okay.
My question really was, how have we done it before?
My.
Somebody could tell me that and make me happy. I just know how we did it before.
So at this time, we'll move to our next item.
You're not going to answer that question?
I don't have the answer for you.
Do you know, Michelle, how we've done it in the past, where somebody expires at the end of the year? When do they have the meeting to appoint the person?
Chairman Commissioners, we've done it both ways. It all just depends on everybody's schedule. It depends on how many applications that we receive. Sometimes December is kind of iffy, and we can have a lot of planning. Sometimes December is kind of iffy and we can have a lot of planning items on there. We have time to get the board interviews done. And then, and, and, you know, it all just comes down to the part of pulling me a lot of times is, is how well the board vacancy word gets out there.
Thank you. So at this time, we'll have Community Action Partnership in Neutrona County, uh, up for, um, the twenty twenty-five CSBG grant update. Um, Director Wessels, Board Chair Oster, and Board Member Gary Shaki is also in the House. Welcome.
Good afternoon, thank you very much for doing the follow-up with us. Um, when we last met, we were having a discussion about how the state had indicated that our contract needed to be signed in a specific way because of being a public community action agency. And they had proposed an email to, um, the county attorney about some alternatives and some other language. But it was at that time we discussed that it was a little more involved than that. And so Christie and I met with CAP Law Attorneys and, which CAP Law is the Community Action Partnership Legal Consulting Service that's available nationwide. We had a conversation with them, supplied the documents, including the resolutions and things like that, just to kind of say, hey, what would, what should we do here? And there were a couple of things that were revealed. Number one, that it was clear that the state may have been asserting certain processes, but were not necessarily giving all the information about impact. Because they were kind of assuming some things themselves. That particular individual is on leave for two weeks, so we haven't had a chance to talk to her again. But I think it's fair to say that there were some things that were maybe not known that she might have spoken to differently. Um, mainly that assigning us as an entity, an eligible entity. We can't be assigned an eligible entity because we are still a part of the county government. At this time, that resolution that was done in two thousand and three just talks about how we conduct our finances and other things independently. But we are still an arm of the county government. If you do not sign the contract, it just means that we don't get the CSBG funding. Doesn't change our status as far as being a part of the county government because that would require a dissolution of us in, in its entirety. So relinquishing us or saying from the state's point of view, oh, you could just, you know, say they should be the eligible entity, doesn't change anything. In fact, we're ineligible to be the eligible entity at this time because we do not have an independent five oh one C three, which would be required. So CAP Law made a recommendation that because the resolution indicates that we conduct our finances independently and all our paperwork is on file with the state, we've received the grant annually into our own accounting structure, that the commissioners would have the right to sign that contract without having to worry about taking funding into their own coffers because that's not how it's been done anyway. It also gives us an opportunity over the next year to look at this a little bit with some more clarity and, and thoughtfulness around being, clarifying our relationship, which is what we've been trying to do since, at least since I started. Um, is to be really clear about, these are where the lines are drawn. This is our responsibility. We are an accountable public entity as it stands right now. That won't change. But what's at risk is not having six hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, which would be very helpful to the community. So that's where we landed. Any questions that I can answer?
Any questions for Kelly? Commissioner Nor.
I don't have you, I don't, yeah, sorry. I don't have you for Kelly, but I do for Heather.
Yeah, we, we're gonna have Heather weigh in, but go ahead and.
Okay.
Well, does anybody have any questions for Kelly?
Well.
All right, then, then go ahead.
Yeah, because this is basically just in reference to what, what your email was. So if you would share a little bit of that information on.
Yes, well, I, I would just echo what, what Kelly, um, said. We, we had a, a brief discussion yesterday, um, about what they discovered and just, you know, reviewing, um, the records that I have. I, I would agree, they're, they're a public entity, um, they're a public agency. The resolution that we looked at a couple of weeks ago just sets up a separate financial and auditing program for CAP. That the same is, uh, is done for like the airport board and the library board and, and the other statutory boards. Um, however, they're still a public entity and to receive the funding, uh, the commissioners should sign the, the grant agreement. And, um, you know, it gives us more time to look at whether, uh, they want to pursue nonprofit status or just leave things the way that they are. But I don't see any detriment to, to going forward with approving the agreement, um, this evening or, or as soon as you can.
Okay, well, that's, that's what I wanted to hear.
Commissioner Laird, you're the liaison. Do you have any thoughts on whether we should move forward with this or not? Or just any color on the situation?
My thoughts are, is confusion, and I'm, I see Gary's here today. I'd like to hear what Gary has to say about it. If you could come up to the microphone, how, it's how the recorder picks you up, I think.
Counted on, on Kelly for that. Um, just by way of history, and I know Dallas, you, you asked me about what we're thinking about being private or not. It's been one thing under discussion for a while because of the, the kind of awkward spot we find ourselves in, the limitation of numbers of Board of Directors for CAP. But not for healthcare for the homeless and how do we manage both of those things together? And so the idea of maybe becoming private was, you know, kind of like just starting to germinate on that basis. We certainly, as far as I'm concerned, we've, you know, we've had this relationship with the county for goodness only knows how many years. You know, in the, in the scores are tens of years. And so, uh, I would hope that we just can keep it going the same way it has been. And we would have a year and, you know, to explore whether it would benefit, and, and I'm talking about benefit to people who are trying to help with the CSBG funds in this particular instance. Where do, how can we benefit them the best? Right now, it's continuing how we have been. A year, two years from now, we might have a different proposal.
And my concern is, when you change something too materially, I wonder how that affects the budget or affects what money you can receive. There's always those kind of things haunting the backgrounds here. So I'm one of these guys that if it isn't broke, don't fix it.
Well, I'm, I'm that way right now, too.
I'm good with that, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
So are we, and we may never want to change it. But we have, you know, we have to, to do our due diligence, we have to consider all the options too. But for right now, I'm with you.
Okay.
Very well, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary. It seems to me that, uh, keeping the status quo is a good idea. Seems to me that the B O C C is fairly disengaged from what, um, CAP is doing. And I don't know that that's in the county's best interest. We have a nice presentation from you during the budget session. And then it's kind of no news is good news, I guess. Because I think that you're very qualified and I think you have a very qualified board to lead you in matters that the B O C C really doesn't have any experience or expertise in. But I, I wonder if, if our liaison or another commissioner could be a little more engaged with you and then give us a little more feedback. So, you know, may, it's not on a monthly basis, but at least maybe a couple of times a year, we have some sense of how you guys are doing. So then, when we get to, um, the next, you know, budget cycle meeting, again, we have a good presentation and we don't, we're not a big part of your funding, but you guys do impact a lot of people in the community.
Thank you for your comments, um, Chair and other commissioners. I appreciate the support and, and curiosity. I can tell you that we provide reports, our achievements are sent to the Commissioner's Office every month um, in probably more detail than you would ever want to see. Um, because sometimes they're a little bit big packets. But I also think that sometimes, um, and I've actually had this conversation with the Health Department as well and, and, and other entities, is that we are very externally facing. There are departments in the county that are internally facing and there are those that are externally facing. And it seems to me that on a, at least a quarterly basis, it might be beneficial for us to either complete a template or have some reserved time in a work session where we can tell you, um, as a group, this is what we've been doing the last quarter. These are the things that we've achieved out in the community. Because I think that there's, there's some importance in that. What is the citizenry really receiving? Um, it also can take away a little bit of myth about what some of our departments do. Um, it seems like the only time that a lot of, um, the externally facing departments come in is when there's something financial that's going on or a big change that's going to happen or we're gonna build a building or we need a new building or something like that. But the citizens of this community come to me every day. They're coming into our offices and not all of them are necessarily the most impoverished. They're just people who have hit a crisis or a bump in the road or who don't know where else to turn and see us as a friendly opportunity to have information referral rather than a state agency that they think they're gonna take their independence away. Older adults oftentimes do feel that way. So I think it would be helpful if some of us were to be a little bit more accountable to you in a maybe a formalized way, quarterly, so that you could actually hear what those achievements are and maybe find a way for us to work together a little more cohesively.
Good, well, we look forward to seeing you sooner rather than later. Very good, okay, thank you. Our next appointment is with Stacia Hill, um, Emergency Management Coordinator for Resolution sixty-seven dash twenty-four, adoption of the Hazard Mitigation Plan. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Did you guys get the light reading? Okay. Um, Hazard Mitigation Plan has been something that Neutrona County has had for a long time. Um, this year it was done a little bit differently where it was turned into a region, instead of just a single county, or county plan. And the reason for that was because the state actually paid for the development of this plan. They hired a contractor to put it all together for us. So there was no out of pocket money for Neutrona County. Our section of the plan starts like on page two oh eight. Um, what it does is it goes through and identifies through risk analysis, um, hazards that are in Neutrona County. Some of them, some of them are dictated by FEMA, which really don't have a big impact on us. Um, and it is suggested by FEMA that we have a plan. But yet there's the caveat that if we don't have a plan, we're not gonna get FEMA money. So we've spent the last year going over this, uh, plan, pulling a lot of different stakeholders together. This is what the final plan is. And last week, it was finally approved by FEMA. So I'm hoping that you guys will adopt this plan.
Just a general question, um, how did it work with the contractor? Did it work well with the contractor? Or how did this new region-based approach work? Um, did you have the opportunities to participate, you know, as fully as maybe in the past? Um, or what would you do differently?
It was nice having the contractor for a couple of reasons. One of them was it, the state paid for it, so therefore we're not having to come up with the money to do that. So that's, that's a big plus for us. The contractor themselves, um, the three counties that are in this region, Converse, Niobrara, and us, um, we had some difficulties with the contractor and we have shared that with the state. Um, it's my understanding that the state contracted with a certain company. This company then subcontracted out to who wrote this plan. Um, so we have had some concerns, not, not on the, shouldn't say on the quality of work, I think the plan addresses all the issues. They're from Colorado, they're not Wyoming. Um, some of the, some of the stuff that we have here in Neutrona County is not necessarily the same as what they have in Niobrara County. But overall, I think it went well. Um, and I think the plan is, is a good plan.
Thank you for being diplomatic. Um, you know, I, uh, didn't focus on Converse or Niobrara Counties, those sections, um, at five hundred and thirty-eight pages. It, you know, overall, it seemed, um, like, uh, quite a, quite a work product. Um, is there anything in that Converse County Annex or Niobrara County Annex that we commissioners of Neutrona County ought to be aware of?
No, I, I don't believe so. I think, I mean, when they're talking about, um, expansive soils and stuff like that, we don't have a lot of that here in Neutrona County, whereas it might affect Niobrara County more so. Um, so we've tried to make our responses to, like, expansive soils as generic as we possibly can by and still meet what FEMA is asking us to meet.
I, I suppose my, my thinking is, um, Casper is closer to Glen Rock than Douglas. So the, in event of, and, and there's the Deer Creek. Um, you know, there, there's obviously those structures, there's a lot of oil and gas, um, in, in that area. Um, you know, Meadow, Meadow Acres is right on the border. And so I, I think that maybe I need to satisfy myself at least. And, and I don't know if you've kind of focused in on the western half of, of, or western quarter of Converse County for some of those same reasons. Because in the event of some sort of emergency management crisis, we might be able to provide more timely assistance, uh, to Glen Rock. And I, I don't know if, how that would come into play exactly.
Okay, this is gonna address hazards, it's not going to address any type of response. So that's what our E O P for, is for. So the E O P and the hazard mitigation do, do go hand in hand. So this doesn't have any type of response whatsoever to any county in it.
Do the hazards, that's fine, and take you for, you know, um, setting me straight a little bit on that. Um, do we have the familiarity with those hazards in that western quarter of Converse County um, to deal with them as necessary or as may be needed?
I, I believe we do, because I really do believe this outlines it well. If, if we're going to look at hazards in our neighboring county, Converse County, I, I think this gives us a very good understanding. And I think with our emergency operations plan and also the relationships that we've built with Russ down in Converse County, I, I don't have any concerns if, if something major happens. I mean, it's no different than the snowstorms when they come up and they help us. I mean, that's just how we all work.
Good, any questions, Commissioner North?
Stacy, you said that there was some issues with Neutrona County, Converse County, and Neutrona, or Niobrara County. When, when you were going through with the contractor.
With the contractor, not with us, yes.
No, I'm just saying with the contractor. I'm not saying between the counties. Have you got any recommendations for how we could, I mean, other than getting somebody that's local that understands our system a little better? Have you got any other recommendations on how we could actually improve that? So we could take that to the state and say, you know, this is, these are areas that we need to, because if you were having problems then other counties are having similar problems just because you seems like every time we get somebody out of Colorado, we have
Different issues, yes.
Yeah, so.
You, you know, I can't tell you exactly what the other counties situations were, but I can tell you that all three of the emergency managers, myself included, have reached out to the state. And we have had conversations about how we felt this process went. So I think we've addressed that. I can't tell the state how to spend their money. So if they wanted to hire these guys again, it wouldn't come up for five years, which is a good thing. But I think with as many, I, I shouldn't say complaints from just us because they've broke Wyoming down into all of our different regions. So as they're finishing one region, they're starting in on another region. And I know that other regions have had complaints also. So I think the contractor issue is going to be taken care of at the state level.
Okay, well, if there's anything I can do to help you guys out on that, please let me know.
I'll make a note of it.
But well, that's something that, that we need to have. We need to be able to work with our different counties all the way across board.
Sure.
And, you know, this is a big state, but not very many people. And everybody knows everybody one way or another, so.
I think one of the biggest things that they could have done was had a, a contractor from our state work on our plan because it would have covered the whole state then, you know, instead of bringing in somebody. I don't know. Did they have the lowest bid? I don't know. But I think keeping it local is where it should be gone.
Well, I agree. And there's enough, there's enough contractors that have branches here that understand what Wyoming's like. That they could work within that. So I, I understand what you're saying completely because I've had a lot of consternation with other groups over the years. And especially when they bring somebody in from out of state that doesn't have any idea of what we have to deal with on a regular basis, so.
Well, and FEMA is back east too, so they have a hard time understanding what happens in Wyoming.
Yeah, well, there's no hurricanes, so. Thanks.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I don't think we have other questions.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think this is on the consent agenda, isn't it, Heather? Okay. Next with Danielle Krucek. Regarding an update for HR risk management.
Good afternoon. I've got several topics here. There's lots of moving pieces going on right now. So I think maybe we'll just kind of go topic by topic. And if you guys want to ask questions, we'll get through that topic and move on to the next one, if that's okay, Chairman? All right. The first one is the HR steering committee. That committee is running right now. We are moving forward with the job description project. We have road, bridges and parks that will be completed in the next couple of weeks. And then we'll move on to the next departments. All department heads and elected officials have that schedule. And so we're moving forward with that. The next project that I want to schedule with the HR steering committee is to update the personnel policies. I think it would be a good time to start this in January after end of year reporting is due with the EEO reporting and the elections done and benefits and open enrollment. So we'll start that in January. So I think this is a good committee that's getting some projects completed HR wise. Do you have any questions on these ones?
Would you remind me? We have someone, I think either the clerk or someone from the county clerk's office on the HR committee who are just not necessarily the people, but what are the offices that are represented on that committee?
So it depends on the project so that we didn't take up time of all the elected officials and all the department heads at once. It kind of depends on the topic. With the personnel policies, I will invite honestly, everybody whoever wants to show up. I would hope that everybody would review the policies. But if whoever wants to be on the committee is more than welcome. The Warm HR Task Force, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago. A couple of things that came out of that meeting. We discussed CDLs and the requirement for CDLs nowadays and the lack of training companies. One thing that the city of Cheyenne is doing is partnering with LCCC. They've got a five week training and it is, I believe it's five hundred dollars is what they charge. And they're using the city of Cheyenne's vehicles, which they said is very beneficial because they're being tested on their own equipment and learning to drive their own equipment. So that's something that I will work with Mike Hagler on. He's had a couple of other ideas as well. But we are required to have CDLs now with the equipment operators. So that's something that we've had several applicants that have equipment operator experience, but they don't have the CDL to go with it. And we have a couple of our operators who are basically grandfathered in because they've been with us for years, but they don't have the CDL. And it would be beneficial for them to get the CDL. So we're looking at different options for that. The city of Cheyenne and city of Casper both recently just completed market studies. These are the prices that they paid. So I just wanted to show you and remind you that we're able to handle this in-house. It's pretty expensive. So they do expect to have wage increases come out of these market studies. And I can say how many positions, if you guys want. Several positions will get wage increases. I can send that out to you separately. But that's what we're working with, with the market. And then also artificial intelligence, policies and procedures for using AI. We need to be mindful of private information and I'll work with Eileen on a policy for AI. Employees are using it and Warm is already starting to see a couple of concerns, not necessarily claims, but concerns come out of liability with people using AI. And I guess some private information was exposed from another municipality and they used AI to create the document. So those are things that we need to be mindful of and on our radar. Parking, we continuously have parking issues. Last week when you guys
Can I interrupt you?
Yes, please.
With regard to AI, artificial intelligence, what is the timeframe for having policies and procedures? And I assume for using AI means for county employees to use AI?
Correct.
And so what is the timeframe for having something that, that we can review?
I have to talk with Eileen on it. She is going to an AI conference here shortly. I don't know exactly when it is, but as soon as she comes back from that conference, hopefully she'll be more educated on it as well. I do believe I can tell you that I have tried to use ChatGPT and it's blocked with the county. So I'm not too concerned because I think our IT department has it pretty locked down right now.
Okay. And I was, that was my next question is, is what is the frequency of use across the county at this point? But it sounds fairly limited.
Yeah.
All right. Go ahead on parking.
Okay. With parking, like I said, lots of parking concerns, issues going on right now. Last week when you guys had your special meeting and then we had voting just starting and then we There was not an empty spot in the public parking lot. And we did get some concerns and some complaints from the public because there were no empty spots. So Garrett and I plan on coming up with a couple of different proposals for the commissioners to consider as soon as that other parking lot is completed. We have to take into consideration handicap spaces, how many are required? County vehicles, employee accommodation, parking, public parking. We've got agreements with Hotel Virginian, Gale Gardens. There's lots of moving pieces with parking as well. So that parking lot is going to be a big help, the new parking lot. We've just got to get it finished and then try to figure this out. Because when this courthouse is busy, there is no parking out there. And it does not help when the clerk of district court has jury selections as well.
So when you say finished, we're talking about a finished all weather surface, not paved? Or are you talking about when it's finished paved?
Whenever we can park there, whenever Garrett says we can start parking there.
Well, and I, I think that you know, people including Mr. Hagler and, and Mr. Oatenheffer have suggested we allow it to settle. And so I think an all-weather surface for the time being is anticipated. And by time being, I don't see it paved until late next spring at the earliest, but, but we'd have to consult with the experts on that. But I don't mind having maybe even a temporary parking arrangement. Once people can park on it, but we might turn it into something that looks a little different after it's paved and striped.
Okay. Makes sense.
Go ahead.
I have, I had a question, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Laird.
Do we, has anybody told you how many spaces may be over there? Have anybody guessed that yet?
No, Garrett told me thirty.
So what I'm wondering, because I'd heard this beginning of when I started this term, there were people that worked here that didn't have a parking place, some employees. So one of my thoughts in the back of my head when I, that thing came up for sale across the street was that that if we got that, we'd at least have enough parking for all of our employees. At least that was my intent with getting that purchased and, and the discussion I'd had with the other commissioners. So I want to make sure if we were able to, that that happens.
Yeah, Commissioner Laird, we do have enough employee parking. We just do not have assigned employee parking for every single employee. So we have an open lot for employees and there's plenty of parking over there. But it's a little further to walk. It's the one that backs up to Gale Gardens. So it's a little further to walk. There's plenty of spaces. It's never been totally filled. They're just not assigned spots.
Well, so I would like to make sure our employees can park in this, the people that need to park, the ladies that I was talking to at least that work downstairs, that they have a place to park in that lot. Is that something you're not for or against or what?
Well, we haven't done the proposal yet, but I'm definitely not against it. One thing that we have considered and Garrett and I have discussed is people that work in the new courthouse. Those employees would get to park in that, the lot further down so that they don't have to walk from clear over here. And then employees who work in this building would park in that new parking lot. And truly the steps are closer than being down, down here in our, the David Street parking lot. It's actually closer, the new parking lot is, you just have to cross the street. But it is closer parking lot, walkwise. One other thing he was discussing with those slots is depending on whatever the measurements are, the size are of each spot, slanting them instead of pulling straight in. We may be able to get more spots if we slammed them at an angle.
Have you considered assigned parking lots for all employees?
We have not done a proposal yet.
You what?
We have not done the proposal yet, no.
Is that a possibility?
It is. I don't know if it's the best option. There's still going to be issues with everybody wants the closest spot. That's just how the cookie crumbles.
That's called seniority, isn't it?
Well, I can say the clerk over here, when we were doing the parking study here about a year ago, she's got employees that show up at seven fifteen so that they can get the closest parking spot. Her employees are on time because they show up to get the closest parking spot.
Well, it is interesting because I, I know there are a lot of county employees that have more seniority than the four people you see in front of in front of you. And we get pretty nice parking spaces.
Yeah.
So it is complicated.
Yeah. The one big issue right now, I think, is when we do have your special meetings and we've got the voting going on, when we have employees that are capable of parking out here, but they don't want to park out there, it's more convenient to park closer in the public parking lot. They're parking in the public parking and they shouldn't be.
Well, between department heads and electeds, I think we can remind our, our staff, but, but we can talk about other options too. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, I was curious or thought to mention, if we were to deem that parking lot an employee parking lot, would we be able to maybe get with the city for a lit crossing light like we have over here on Center? I mean, even though we have that, we still have people almost getting hit by cars on a daily basis, I think due to the trees and the visual. But I mean, the ladies walking across the crosswalk out here too, there's so many cars going, especially at five back and forth. So I was wondering if there was something more we could do to help ensure their safety crossing those roads too.
I think that's a great idea because we're only going to increase the number of people crossing B Street, BC Street. So that's something that we can, I can bring up with the city.
Yeah, we would absolutely love that. Another thing that I looked into, I was just recently in Colorado and they have on the signs, the crossing signs, they've got flags and you take the flag to the other side. It's another visual and it's a reflective flag, but there's a, I believe it was in Littleton. All of their crosswalks have flags and people take them and go through the crosswalk and put the flag back in the in the sign.
I gotta make a little joke here. We were hearing commentary about Colorado a few minutes ago. And then I was, when you said that, I was thinking, yeah, they also have that in Jackson. But it is a safety thing and especially if you're trying to beat off somebody's car with, with the flag, self-defense. No, but, but safety, I think whatever we can do, especially that's probably, that could be more economical than lighting and that thing that they put in the, in the street, you know. Unfortunately, some people, they blow through that thing on Center Street anyhow. And, you know, I, I saw somebody almost run over a deputy not too long ago and, and he had pushed the thing and he just kind of shook his head, couldn't believe that somebody just flew right through that.
Yeah. And unfortunately, we've let the city know many times that the lights that are in the street have been broke for over two years. They don't work. It's just the signs. The lights in the street do not flash anymore. And we have continuously let them know they haven't been fixed. So. Yeah.
Are you talking about the lights right out here don't work anymore?
When you cross Center Street to go to the new courthouse, there's lights in the street on the crosswalk that's painted. There's lights that flash. When you push the button across the street, the lights flash in the road and they've been broke for over two years. They don't flash.
They do work on the signs.
Yes, the signs work.
I didn't even know there was any in the street.
Yeah, yeah, they haven't worked for, yeah. So. Okay. Enough about parking. Recruitment, hiring, senior planner. Doing everything we can. There's a shortage. I mean, that's the field to go into right now. I'll just give you an example on Indeed in September, we spent a hundred and thirty dollars for the ad. There were four hundred and twelve impressions, thirty-four direct clicks on the job ad. Two started an application and only one applied. And the one that applied is not qualified and was a previous employee and is not eligible for rehire with Natrona County. So these are the things that I'm facing. I have got some information from I have got some information from SHRM on using AI for recruiting. And I am working with another SHRM member on learning how to send out ads to colleges throughout the country using AI. So I'm looking at everything possible. We do not have a planner or any planning applicants as of right now. In August and September, we had several hires and several terminations. We had a couple that retired, I wanted to point out. We had three retire from the sheriff and one retire from the treasurer's office that had over 20 years of service, all of them. So that's something to be proud about. We do have a risk specialist offer out pending background checks. Commissioner North got to meet that applicant and the applicant actually came to the Health and Safety Committee meeting and did some job shadowing to make sure it's the right fit. So I'm excited for those to come back. We have one inspector position open since we promoted the new building official. And then we're recruiting for a parks maintenance operator. Michael Brown has over 20 applications to review and I actually have more than I need to send him today. And he's anxious to fill that position with the weather coming up and the lodge opening. Mr. Hagler was also able to hire a previous employee back as an equipment operator and he still has two positions open. We had another offer out that cleared background checks that did not show up for orientation. So we rescinded the offer. Any questions on that? Okay. Benefits and open enrollment. First two months of our medical plan for this fiscal year is running high. It's running at 116% loss ratio, creating a deficit of $196,000. However, we really focus on the 12-month rolling. That's the big thing to focus on. And the plan is running well. We're at a 91% loss ratio with a surplus of 625,775. So the medical plan is running well. We are watching closely the cost of weight loss drugs. We have a couple of very expensive brand-name drugs that are being used by employees. In quarter two of '24, there were 14 fills of Wegovy and Zepbound totaling $28,302 for just those 14 fills. So we are watching this closely and we're working with our benefit brokers and we'll decide next year during renegotiating our contracts, if this is something that we need to consider to continue to cover or if there are other more generic or non-brand name drugs that would work in their place. Also, we had an air ambulance network change. Air methods that flies in and out of Casper will now be paid at out-of-pocket pricing. However, that's not to worry on the employees' end. Yep. Out of network, sorry, out of network. For the employees, though, the out-of-pocket pricing will not change because of the No Surprises Act. So they still get to pay the in-network pricing. However, the county will take the hit on the other end since we are self-insured. So Blue Cross Blue Shield is going to continue to work on negotiations and work on that contract to see what we need to do to get them back in-network with us so that we aren't paying astronomical prices for flights.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. I've dealt with the air ambulance charges and they'll make a grown man cry.
Yeah.
I mean, I've seen them $180,000 to get somebody up to Denver. $60,000 to get them from Shoshone into here. Is that what we're facing?
Yes, absolutely. And we are, Commissioner Laird, we're a self-funded plan. Our reinsurance company, our threshold that we stop at is $125,000, meaning that the county pays $125,000 of the first claims and our reinsurance company does not start kicking in until after that $125,000. So if somebody has a $108,000 flight, we will pay that because it is out of network.
That sounds bad, but there was an individual on Coach Road that had to have an air ambulance from their Wyoming Medical Center that paid $50,000 when it was at Melds.
They would grieve.
You couldn't get in there because of the snow. That was the only, only route they had. So it, yeah, it's very expensive.
Well, we're not the only ones, is what Blue Cross is telling us. We've got United Healthcare, we've got Cigna. It's air methods that is not playing nicely and not working well with the people of Wyoming and insurance.
Well, it's not a, it's not, it doesn't cost anywhere near that number. I mean, it just doesn't. I was involved in a case where they pick up a little gal out here by Shoshone and flew her in and she died. And they sent the family a bill for $65,000. Actually got them to forego the bill. So that can happen at times, especially for a minor, but this is a serious problem for the commission and for the people, the amount of money they charge. I don't know if we can make a deal with them or not.
Yeah, I don't know how the commission could help negotiate with that. I can tell you the insurance companies are doing what they can. So.
So you know what happened is two companies bought up all the air ambulances and then they got Congress to pass a certain act. And boy, did, did life change for anybody who came in an air ambulance.
We have an average of two flights per year. Sometimes there's more. But typically we have at least, I shouldn't say an average, typically we have at least two flights per year that happens on our plan with all of the employees that are covered on our plan, all the members. Because we also cover the outside boards. So we cover the health department, the airport, CAP. So we're covering all the outside boards as well. They're on our plan under the umbrella. So we do have a minimum of two flights per year. So that's something that we're prepared for. We do in our actuarial study that we have our brokers do. Usually every six months, we are prepared for it with our budget, but you never know. So those are the things that are happening with benefits. Open enrollment will happen in November. Any other questions on that? Okay, training for department heads. One thing that I'm considering doing is a monthly training on HR and supervisory topics. I've had several questions lately on FMLA, service animals, evaluations. So there's lots of different topics that I think would benefit the electeds and the department heads and doing a monthly training. Those who would like to join can join. If not, you know, we'll, we'll do a monthly training. But that is something that I am looking at doing every month to help guide department heads along. Plus, you know, we've got new department heads, new supervisors. It doesn't just have to be for department heads. If you've got, chief deputies can come, lower-level supervisors that deal with some of these issues as well, they'll be more than welcome. And then root cause analysis. A RCA investigation is due on all fault incidents with warm. I can tell you that they do take time. However, they're effective. I can say that we recently just did an RCA at the fairgrounds with an incident that took place. And typically what would have happened was Warm would have just paid the claim after we went and did the root cause analysis and Warm came up here and worked with me and the supervisors at the fairgrounds. There is no evidence that that damage took place at the fairgrounds whatsoever. And so the claim was not paid. So I think they do take time, however, they are effective. So I know there's some grumblings around of it's just more paperwork, but I can say there's proof of money that's being saved by doing these.
How much, Chairman, I needed clarification.
Do they, hang on just a second. Do those cost the county anything?
No.
Okay.
No, we do.
Something warm?
I'm trained to do them and the risk specialist will be trained to do them as well.
When, when Warm is involved, like it was in this, this one you were referring to, is there a cost in that?
No.
Okay.
There is not.
Both of you, you decide who goes first.
Go ahead.
On your, on your sheet here, you said because of a completed RCA, Warm did not play on, pay on the claim as there was not proof of negligence by the county. So I read that as meaning we didn't do anything wrong, but you said it, it didn't happen on county grounds?
We don't believe the damage took place on county grounds, no. So the claim was that a lawnmower hit a vehicle while a monster truck, while they were preparing for a monster truck show at the fairgrounds. After we went out and did the full investigation with the truck being lifted and where the damage was and then the lawnmower, the lawnmower has no scratches and the lawnmower was not tall enough to come in contact with the fender of the truck.
Did anybody see it?
No.
Interesting.
No. So.
I was just gonna say, I've been doing root cause analysis for 25 years and they work.
Yeah.
And a lot of times, things that you think are human error, when you start digging into it, you find out that there's other issues that are associated with it. Sometimes when you think it's equipment error, you find out that it wasn't.
Yeah.
There, there are a lot of benefits to doing a root cause analysis and you know, it's, they don't have to be super complicated. And that's one thing that I think a lot of people misunderstand. They think of it like they do in the oil field where you dig into it and you go way down deep in a lot of areas and you don't necessarily have to do that. You can look at it and you can basically eliminate a lot of the hazards that may have been there or what could have been the cause really easily. And so it's not that big of a deal. It's just a matter of looking at things and, and writing them down and, and deductive reasoning is basically what it comes down to.
Taking the time to do it, yeah.
Yep.
Thank you, Commissioner North. That concludes pretty much the major topics that are happening right now. Do you have any other questions for me HR-wise?
Any other questions for Danielle? Well, thank you for the comprehensive update. We appreciate it.
Yes.
Has Brad, sorry, has Brad gotten any applications? Have we gotten any applications?
We have not. No.
Great.
Thanks. Thank you.
All right, we're going to take a five-minute break and then we will All right, we're gonna, uh, get going again. Talk to our distinguished county attorney Heather Duncan Malone for our legal update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I guess I'll start with the review of the agenda. As you know, there is a liquor license hearing this evening for a restaurant liquor license from Taven LLC. If there are specific questions, I would probably defer to the county clerk because she's the. Person with the best information about that. Are there any questions on the, on the liquor license?
Any questions for Heather? Commissioner North?
The only question I've got is when they came in for their full liquor license, they, we asked them specifically about. Having a restaurant license and at that time he said, no, we don't want that because I couldn't do my. My other, uh. My, what was it?
Catering.
Catering. He couldn't have outside parties. So. At this point in time, since he has decided to relinquish his. Full liquor license. And he's gone right back to where it was. I feel like the county has been plagued a little bit on this whole thing, so.
I'm not following that, Dave. I don't get that. Guy's just asking for a restaurant license, isn't he?
That, that is my understanding, yes, but he, he previously had a, a full retail license.
But a lot of people change that. John Johnson's done that two or three times because it's cheaper to, it's cheaper to run a restaurant license than a full, more license. I don't know why it would have an effect on the county negatively. You're smiling in that way. I'd like you to say something, Steve. I mean, I don't, I mean, I know who the guy is, but if he wants to run a restaurant, yeah. And he's limited on the amount of liquor he can serve by, based on how much food he sells.
Do you, if you, would you turn on your microphone if, if you're gonna keep going?
I, so I'm not sure what the concern is.
Did you want to?
Basically, we asked him very specifically, I asked him very specifically about a restaurant license. And his whole thing was, well, I don't want to do that because I've got a catering license and that won't work. Here we are, a little over a year later, he relinquished his license to somebody else. And now he's coming back and asking us for a restaurant license at this time.
Did he relinquish that? Is that the license that we gave to the kid or is that?
Yes, it is.
Which one did John Johnson get through the bankruptcy? That was the one that was in litigation.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, that, that's correct. That was the, the license that Cowboys held at that location on Talke Road and then that one. Was sold to, to Mr. Johnson. I think, you know, you can raise some of these questions with the applicant tonight as, as to why the, the change in the business model and the change in the license.
But he, but the license that he had full time, what, was it?
Taven just relinquished his.
But that, didn't that one go to the bankruptcy court?
No, no.
No, it did not.
Different license. Which one went to the bankruptcy court?
Uh, it, it was, yeah, it used to be Racks or Cowboys. And then it went to a new location and to a different license holder.
Yep, that went, that went to Taven. Then Taven relinquished their full liquor license. And now they're applying for a restaurant license.
Yeah.
And we specifically asked them about that when they were before us a year and a half ago. And I, I will ask that tonight because I want answers on that.
You're not thinking he's gonna have pole dancing, are you?
Okay, and then moving on to the consent agenda, commissioners, there is a ratification of a gas service agreement for the health department property and location. There is the purchase agreement between the county and Mr. Arrowood who put the bid on the Saddle String property. That, that's on the agenda for this evening. A resolution naming Mary Hester Road. I know that there has been, I think, some concern about that publicly. This is just a private road. This is not a public road. And we are just going through this process so that the, a resident out there will have a proper address.
So. Um. I, I spent more time than I would have liked on the Mary Hester Road situation. And, and I think it comes down to the fact that we didn't have a two or three sentence memo from staff. That says, this private road, uh, the application is merely for an extension of an existing private road. It is not a public road, you know, something to that effect. And, and when this stuff comes to the commission for the very first time in our packet on a Friday. Before the meeting. And then we have Saturday, Sunday, you know, it's, it's sometimes, uh, a challenge to not have a cover memo from. Department heads or staff that's leading the charge on some of these things. Now Stacy made a presentation. Stacey Hill made a presentation on adopting the hazard mitigation plan. And I didn't mention this to her and I apologize for mentioning it to her this way indirectly right now. But it would have been helpful in that case too. To have a paragraph on this is what we've done. And this is what's proposed and, and I, Mr. Hagler does a really good job with this. Um, just gives us enough background and says, here it is. That helps us out and it really helps the public out. And we've got to incorporate that into. Things, especially when they're coming to us for the first time. Now. Uh, some of these things we've been messing with for months, including the, um. Saddle string contract, so I wouldn't think we would need a memo on that because we've had. Multiple communications for a couple of months, so. If you get a sense of a little hint of frustration, I, I know that Commissioner North also. Shares in some of that and I think other conversations I've had with some of the other commissioners over the months. You know, at, at times that, that's a, that's something that would be really useful.
Well, and I would point out that I think at the beginning of, uh. It may have been this year or last year, the commission put out a request for memos for all department heads and anybody presenting. Agreements, so, um, I, I don't think that's been rescinded. I think that's still something that is applicable, although I'll. Acknowledge a couple of my items on here do not have memos, but I'll. Explain them and we'll do better in the future.
Well. It's like on the Mary Hester Road. It's embarrassing when we find out. How the process went on social media. And not from our staff. I mean, I didn't say anything on social media, but I. You do read the comments, especially when we get called out specifically on something. It's like, what is this? And then you read the comments, it's like, okay, well, this is. It makes a little more sense, but we need that, but it's just like down in, uh. E. I have absolutely nothing. On this alter vacation, Fremont Street, Washke Street, Buggum Avenue and West Crest subdivision. So I, so I have, you know, it's like, I'm not gonna, I can't vote on something when I don't have all the information. I'm not going to and I don't expect anybody else up here either.
So that, that is one that I placed on the agenda. It is something we discussed before. This is, um. We previously received a petition to vacate portions and this includes. Uh, a portion of property that is adjacent to Mr. Richardson, Richardson Trucking. And there's a real estate transaction that's pending. Um, and so we're adding that particular portion. To the petition that, that was received back in the spring and trying to expedite, um, sending out notice and scheduling this for a hearing. For the commissioners to consider, but you, you are correct. There's not a memo that puts any of that out there.
Well, there's nothing even in the, in our packet. That's the only thing that's in the packet. And when I was, I was reading through, I went through everything. With a fine-toothed comb, trying to think, well, maybe I missed something because of some of the other stuff being such a large. You know, it was a large packet this time and, and it's like, okay, where is this? And so not knowing what that is, is like, I, even if we have something, it's something short, sweet and to the point. You know, I'd rather postpone that.
Well, I'd ask on that particular one that you're not, we have a deadline to get this done so that they can, um, close on the, on the property.
Okay, well, I need more information.
Sure.
To look at and process.
Yeah.
Before I can, I'm gonna vote on that.
So it's not, it's not a decision to grant the vacation, um, at this time. It's just to, to publish this notice so that we can schedule it for a public hearing. On, on November nineteenth.
Okay, well, that, because that's not, that's not clear. In what I'm reading here.
Okay, well, that, that's fair.
I, I just, I don't know what it is, so. And, uh, so that's what. I just. Would like a little bit more detail as far as what, what we're actually asking to do. You know, especially on a consent agenda because that's not open for the general public to even talk about or anything else. And all we're doing is talking, you know. We're looking at it and it's like. Where are we at on this? So.
That's understandable.
Okay, thanks.
So I need to make a comment on that, Mr. Chairman. I'm familiar with that and we did discuss it once.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and it is important that the parties get that done right away because of sale going on and, and access into the Richardson Trucking property. And I think the county is the one that's kinda. Been. The culprit in it, not knowingly, but in getting that kind of fouled up out there, so. So what you're saying is if we pass this, then, then we set a hearing and then we hear it again.
Yes, Mr. Lord.
So you can provide him with a memo by then?
I, I can and, and I do apologize. I think it's, it's fair that, that this just taken by itself is probably confusing and you may not necessarily understand the context of it, so.
Well, it is confusing, but I got it explained to me by the title company.
Yes.
So I got a fairly good explanation of the problem and I could see that it's something we should do. To help everybody out so that whatever transactions they're doing, and I think it's a sale. That they can issue the title policy from the title insurance company.
That, that is correct.
I think if Mr. North sees that, he, I think he would. See it as a worthwhile endeavor by the commission to do that.
Maybe we should just amend what it says or get something updated. You know, on our, on our consent agenda to give us a little more detail.
I mean, I think I may have time to put a memo together for you if you'd like that.
Okay, well, I just think, and so that we have, so the public sees that too, so it's actually presented and.
So Commissioner North, this is item E.
Right.
And it says notice, um, consideration of. The providing notice, is that? Because I, I think then it says consideration of petitions and so I think it is a little bit. I don't know about misleading, but it's a little unclear. Are we considering, are we saying, hey, you're notified that we're considering petitions? To alter, so I, I think those first, just this, the order of those couple of words right there at the beginning and if we changed. Change that agenda item to reflect something a little bit different than maybe clarify.
Yeah, because the way that reads, I mean, to me, the way it reads, that, those, that's the verbiage that we use when somebody has petition to change something. And that's what we're. Not just setting a, a hearing date or something else, so.
Right, um, and, and I'm, I'm sorry for the confusion there. Um, and, and yes, I can see really what this is should be approval of the publication.
Yeah, that, that would take care of the whole thing.
Yes, so.
If we did that.
That would have been a better choice, for sure.
Instead of consideration of a petition, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would, that would take care of it.
Yeah, that, that would take care of it. I, I agree. Um, thank you. So do you want to keep going? I think we had a couple other comments on, or questions on consent agenda items, but, um. Maybe you want to lead us through those.
Okay, um. I think we've, you've discussed the hazard mitigation plan. Any, anything else on that that I could address? Okay. Um, the, the N C E E C B G pre-award application, uh, is a statement of work for a grant to help cover the cost of, uh, the generators for the health department. And I've, I've been, and you may be aware as well that, uh, we did finally get a couple of responses to the RFP for the generators and I think, um. Garrett's going to, to choose one of those responses and award the, the bid. Or, or put a notice of award and a contract together for the next meeting on the fifth for, for that project.
Yep, and, and this is something that Anna and, I think Anna Kinder and Ashley Braddock have been. Working on for a while and, um, it has taken longer since after the first RFP, there were no responses. They republished it and got two, so, um, we're just moving, now we can actually apply for that grant.
Uh, Resolution sixty-eight twenty-four is a resolution, um, that, uh, the county should pass to, to formalize the establishment or the formation of the. The Neutrona County Senior Citizen Service District. This resolution is the same form as a, uh, I believe one in Carbon County. That was approved by the Department of Revenue. They also need a resolution from the county that reflects the formation of the district. And kind of the terms of the formation of the district and the imposition of the mill levy. Any questions on that? Then there's some standard trailer lot permits and then the last item is a proposed MOU. Between all the local governments impacted by the Dutchman Solar Project. The Industrial Siting Council at the Sattler Wind Project did recommend that the local entities enter into an MOU. They, they find it helpful. When the local entities do that, um, this draft was prepared by Converse County. With respect to the amounts that the local entities are asking for, I don't have that information yet. I, our request. Is going to only be about eighty-three thousand, just about over eighty-three thousand. And that is composed of some overtime that the sheriff is requesting and then a little less than eight thousand for the fire district. I don't have the values or the figures for the other entities. In this particular, uh, project, however, the amount of impact assistance funds is considerably larger, so I don't think that there's going to be, uh. You know, as long as the requests are just justifiable, um, I don't think there's going to be a shortage of funds for, for this project to the local governments. Any questions on, on the proposed MOU?
I, I don't have any doubt and I apologize. I was, um, preoccupied with something else for just a second there. Are we gonna get it the other, so you may have said this. But are we gonna get the other folks all on board or are we still, are they still stragglers?
I, I think it's the intent for everybody to sign on to this. We, I just don't have the numbers of everybody's requests as of right now. Probably will have that within the next few days, however.
But are we concerned that there are gonna be some outliers, um, with some egregious requests from some of the other? from some of the other jurisdictions, or do you have some comfort level that things are a little more reasonable?
I think things are a little more reasonable, just given how things went with the last project that everyone was involved with. So I I don't have that sense as of now.
Okay. Any, any questions uh about the approval to form on this document? Uh, Commissioners, are we good to go with it? I'm not hearing any other concerns.
I think the only other question I would ask then, the Commissioners, is whether uh you have any interest in amending the agenda to include the C S V G grant application for the funds for cap and add that to to tonight's agenda, or um?
Yeah, we need to do that.
Okay.
And I I don't, I I don't, didn't hear any concerns about the the structure. I think we're gonna need to maybe monitor things a little more closely, but but I think we're okay to approve that and let it get submitted.
So we could potentially amend the agenda to to rename item E so that it's clear what the commission is is approving this evening, um and then to add I guess it'd be an item J, um C S G B grant agreement.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if we're done with that, I do have a question.
Go ahead.
What's the status? Heather, of the two resolutions, the one for the gravel pit and the one for the road?
So those have both been given to Michelle and um should be given to the chairman today for his signature and approval.
Is that all that needs to be done, Mr. Chairman? Oh, you have signed them? I was just curious if we needed another hearing on it, is all I wondered. But you've signed both of them, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, two things. Um. To go back to the Mary Hester, I I read the same article, everybody else did, I'm sure, on Facebook, on the landowner page on Cash Mountain. And everybody felt that it was an extension of the road. It's it's really not. It's too, it's it's a turn in the road to allow another landowner to have a road into the, on their own personal property. And they have to rename that because it's over a thousand feet. So that's why the renaming comes in, because once you go over a thousand feet, you're required by our our rules that you have to rename the road. So it's not an extension as far as we're blazing trails or some, the county's blazing trails or somebody else's. This is a private person on their private lot which boggles my mind that we have people that are complaining because the government doesn't step in and say, you can't do private things on your own private lot. But anyways, with that said, that's simply all it is. It's not an extension of a road. It's a person that literally is turning the road and that it's a family member next door to them that is allowing them to do it. Turning their, turning a section of road so that they can put the road into their own personal property. So this has been blown up to be a big deal when it's in reality not that big of a deal. And it's not an extension like we're running it off the face of the mountain. This is a private individual building a road to his own personal house. Yeah, I guess if you want to. I I I didn't have any, I, that's what I anticipated that it was. My concern was the fact that we didn't have anything from staff telling us what it was. That was, that was my whole concern about it was that we didn't have that detailed, cuz. Sure, and just and just so you know, this morning I brought that up in in the staff meeting, and Jared and I both went down and talked to planning, and she even said herself, yeah, she probably worded that a little bit different on the agenda, but that was the explanation as to what's being done. So it's not the county just said, sure, just go build a road. It's a private individual building a road on their private property. End of story. I mean, so and even in that article, they're like, you all need to go down there and you need to speak your mind. Why don't, come speak your mind. I mean, come tell me if you want us to make decisions for you on your private property. I'm pretty sure you don't, so. So that's where that one lies. Um, the other one.
Good night. You can answer their questions.
Well, just I get it. The it's just information they didn't have, but I also want to put that out there right now so that if you have people that are fired up that want to come down here and be upset about some, they have the information now that that it's not what you think it is. It's simply a a person putting a private road in that because of the length of the road, it has to be renamed, or it has to be at least extended. It's all it is. Simple as that. And they have a right to do it. As far as the cap thing goes, Dallas and we were just talking a little bit ago, and I I will say my feelings on it. I I do think we should move forward with cap, but if ninety percent or ninety-nine percent of these capital organizations are set up by a nonprofit organization and are not run by the government, I really feel that they should probably start working on doing that. Because we don't have involvement in it whatsoever. Um, if there's more to it than I that I'm not seeing, then that's but then I'd like to know what that information is, but I just feel that if majority of them are run that way, then maybe they should really start looking at what they need to do to transition to that. My personal opinion.
I would just respond, even though it's not really, it's your comment time. I I hear what you're saying. Maybe we'll get there. Um, but when, I don't know how many employees they have over there, but every one of those employees is essentially a county employee, or at least in some respects. Okay? And so um disentangling or disengaging may or may not be the right move, but but we don't want to have those unintended consequences. So we'll see what we heard from uh Mr. Shaki and and from um Kelly. You know, we'll we'll hear and we'll be engaged, I think, in that decision so that we can do what's best for the county.
And and don't get me wrong, I'm not saying that tomorrow you should just make all that happen. What I'm saying is is that there is, there's gotta be a reason why a majority of them are run as a uh five oh one C three, not underneath a a government entity. And so that's the only thing I'm saying is that we should, there's something that's still missing in this, to me, in everything that we've heard to this point, and I'm not quite sure what it is, but I think it should really be looked at from all different angles and see why a majority of those are five oh one C three, and if there's a good reason for it and a good reason for them not to be uh underneath the county, then you should probably work on untangling that. If there's a reason why they should stay that way, then I think that understanding that and having the knowledge as to why it should be that way is what we need, cuz personally, right now, I'm still kinda like in the middle of don't really know if they should be underneath us or on their own.
The the only other item I guess I have is the uh Biathlon Club. Would you like me to invite Mr. Holsher and another representative of the club to come back in to discuss uh the proposed operating agreement and grooming agreement that I sent you earlier?
So Heather, uh, we can have some discussion on that now. Um, if you want to visit with us first in an executive session for legal advice, we can do that. I I don't wanna delay it any longer than than necessary, since we're essentially talking about a lot of stuff that was anyway, you know, I mean, here we are, year number two on 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 this uh, on some of this stuff. So anyway, Commissioner North.
Has has Pat reached out to you on any of the issues that were brought up from the inspection?
No, he has not. Um, I can touch base with him about those, but he, I have not heard from him on those particular issues.
Yeah, cuz there were several life and safety issues that were brought up that were identified by Brad and.
And Mr. Commissioner, I'm, Mr. North, I'm not sure that he's gotten that as of yet. I'll I'll have to check with.
Okay, some of those, some of those items were identified in Michael's first report. And there's additional ones that have been identified as well. So um, I really think that that Pat needs to be informed of that as well as you know, whoever the representative is, whether that's Rob or whoever at this point in time. So um I think those are issues that really need to be uh given a deadline, a hard deadline on getting corrected before we do anything else. Just because they, just because they are a life safety issue.
First of all, um, thank you, Commissioner North. Second, let's invite them to our next meeting. That'd be the November fifth. Uh, our our work session. Um, Commissioners, um, please get with Heather. I think she has only heard back from Commissioner North um and me just generally. Um. So let's get any specific uh questions and concerns to Heather in advance of November fifth. And then Heather, I I do think um telling Mr. Holsher that there's some life safety issues and here here the inspection results or here's the memo. Um, I think getting that to him sooner rather than later is important so that they can respond to it when they come here on the fifth and either say we took care of them, or work with Brad, or we're gonna take care of them and not punt for another whatever period of time.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, have we paid the guy for the work he's done?
Uh, that that is another part of the question. Um, there, the invoices and there was an affidavit and some sworn testimony that was also submitted. I don't know if if you've all been able to look through that. Um, I was going to ask whether you were satisfied.
I know we, I know we talked about it, so I'm I'm asking you, does it comport with what we asked him to do?
I I I'm not, I think you'll have to judge whether you think that it's adequate, but he did provide um some testimony and affidavit explaining the grooming and and what he did over this last season. Yes.
So when is, so I don't, do you ha- do you have that with you by any chance?
I do. I did email it to everybody when I received it, but I do have it.
I I think my point, just to make it short here, my comment short is if the man has owed money, I think we should pay it to him. And was this this Jack Hardison, he came and presented, didn't he?
That's correct.
Steve, have you seen this? Well, I'd like to see the man get paid. I'm not saying how much, but I'm saying, I'd like to see him get paid. So does that take a motion by the commission to get that paid, or what?
I I think we need to get a a voucher um for these invoices, and then they can be approved at the next meeting, or um, we don't, I don't have a sound signed voucher for from anybody for the club, and that would be necessary for for these to be paid.
Have have you notified uh his lawyer of that fact?
No, because I didn't have approval from the commission um that the that these were acceptable, so I.
Well, but they're not acceptable unless he does a voucher, right? So he'd need to be advised that he has to do a voucher, and then we need to take a look at it, right?
Right.
I mean, that's what I would think that you would ask him to do.
So are they acceptable? Um, should, or would you just like Mr. Bruss or whomever to submit a voucher, and then you'll consider him at that time?
I guess what I'd say is if there's a voucher, I can tell you what, if if he's, if he's complied with what what we require to get paid, and he's done all of those steps, then I would wanna have the commission decide whether they're gonna approve the payment. But you're saying he hasn't provided, he hasn't.
He's, he, that's just a, that's just something that the the clerk and uh the treasurer need to approve payment of this, but this is what you were after, was this information. And and it's, it, I don't think it's a big deal to get the voucher. I just don't have that for today, for approval today. He, that's not been provided.
Cuz I don't see a sheet here for us to sign like we get for everything else.
I wanted you to look at this and consider it before having them go through that step. If if these are acceptable, that's what I'll tell them, that they are acceptable, and to provide a a signed voucher for approval.
Do we do that to anybody else that submits a bill? Don't they submit a bill and then we take a look at it?
Well, this is a little different, I think, just because of the length of the the negotiations and how long it's taken to get to this point.
Well, you're confusing me. All I, all I really wanna do is is have something presented to me that he's complied with everything we've asked him, and then I guess we decide whether we wanna sign it or not.
Right. I think you can make that decision today whether you're satisfied. Yeah. Right. And if you, and if you haven't had that opportunity, then um we can do that for the next meeting.
Just so everybody's on the same board, um, and know what's going on. I have asked Michael to get some information in reference to that. Um, and I would like to see that prior to us making a decision.
I wouldn't, I wasn't aware of that, but it's fine that you followed up with him and could be helpful. So if you will s- forward that to all of us as soon as he gets it to you, that'd be great.
Oh, yeah, I will. I will just have him present it to all of us, so.
So, it's back in our court. You sent us the email on the ninth with the affidavit and the other stuff, the grooming agreement. Um. I think I'm sensing that we need to look at it. And uh then if if Mr. Brown has some additional insight or information, then that'll be good. I think we should have every intention of making a decision on this and hopefully resolving it November fifth.
Sounds good.
Once again, if you read the email um from Heather on the ninth and and digest the affidavit and the information provided, and have any questions, comments, or concerns, please get with her in advance of November fifth. All right, anything else, Heather?
From me, that that was it.
Okay. We it, we can have Commissioner Roundtable at this point. Uh. Commissioner Frilly, you wanna go first? Do you do, you want? You ready? All right.
Well, just a couple of things I wanna talk about tonight, and it really has to do with roads. This last couple of weeks, I've been out on quite a few around the Cash Mountain area. And uh I guess I had a couple of questions. Uh, at the end of and I guess I, and these are things I could follow up with uh Mr. Hagler, but on the end of uh the county road, uh Hat Six out there at um just past Smith Creek, there's a bunch of uh private property or private road signs put up there. Has that road been abandoned, or? Well, not Smith Creek, but just south of Smith Creek on Hat Six. It goes out to the Banner Ranch. So that's not a maintained county road anymore? Sorry, once it gets onto Russell Gordy's property on Lone Star, it's no longer county. Okay. All right, and then uh uh going back to Smith Creek Road itself, that road, it looks like it's had extensive amount of work that was done to it over over time, but now it looks like it hasn't had work on it in a while, and there's a bunch of potholes getting into it, and then boulders and everything else. So I guess, and and I'm just looking at a couple of roads that I've been personally on here in the last few weeks, and I'm just you know, curious as far as what or how often those get graded, or or do those things? Um, i- is there a, is there a plan on those, or?
I think you did have to talk to Mike about specific ones.
Yep, so that's what I figured. And then the only other thing that I wanted to bring up was uh up on top of Muddy Mountain, there is um state access that, or there's a road that goes off of the main, the top switchback, and you come back, you can go back to the um south, and there's this, there's an. And there's this, there's an access road that lets you get back on the state land back in there. That's recently been sold to a, a local individual. I know who it is, I'll tell you offline, but, that individual has private property, uh, no trespass signs and a trail cam set up now on what I believe is a access road to go to, to public lands. And so I'm not real sure, it looks like it's been, um, almost like that individual feels like he owns that road now and is, is basically shut it off to access back there. So I don't know if anybody knows where I'm talking about, but.
I, I, I know the area you're talking about really well. I have not been up there since you told me about it. There is a road that comes directly off, uh, Muddy Mountain Road that stays on state land, that runs all the way back onto BLM land. If that's the one that he's got blocked off, that's not legal.
That is the one.
Yeah, that, that he can't legally do. And unless, and Commissioner Nicolason can speak better for this, but that is not an area that's restricted. If there's already a road there on, on state planned, you know, you can't camp there, but you can travel on, on those roads. And that day, that does take you directly back into, to BLM property. And if he's got the BLM blocked off back there, just because he has lease on that state land doesn't mean that he can block it off. It has to be declared that way.
And I wouldn't say it's blocked off, um, in the sense of it, it is the gate you have to go through, but it does have private property signs on both sides of it and a trail cam that's catching people coming and going in and out of there. I think part of the problem is if you look on, and we all know that there's an error factor in there, but if you look like even on an app of Onyx, it shows that that road itself, a good majority of that road is showing to be owned by him, which it's really not. Or hasn't been that, it's another, um, it's a road that's always given access back there. So I'll get some more specifics of exactly where it's at.
I'll try to go up there here in the next day or two and take a look and see, cause I can tell you, I can give you more information, cause I'm real familiar with that area.
You're on the right road and you'll see what I'm talking about. If you go down that to the gate, you'll see exactly what I'm talking about. So the only other thing I wanted to say is, as far as county roads, I mean, obviously we just went through 505 and we looked at that list of the roads that have not gone through that process itself. And I'm only here for four more meetings, so I know that it's not gonna get done before December. But I would certainly say that, I don't know what it costs us to do that on 505, but I would certainly say that this commission needs to keep the, uh, momentum rolling and get, get a majority of these roads taken care of. And, um, I'm just restating what I said two weeks ago. I just think we need to get it out and get it done. I mean, there's documentation out there that clearly we saw in this last one that said, this is not an established road and needs to be. And then it went on the back burner for decades. So it just, I, I think we're at that point that you got it rolling, you got the person in line that knows how to do it. You should just continue on and finish it.
Thank you, Commissioner Laird.
A couple of mine are just questions really. I've had some pretty good legal advice lately. And one of them is, is that you should, they're telling me that I really should get a phone. It's a county phone, a cellphone, that we put the emails on and the phone calls on and get them off your regular phone for a whole lot of reasons. And I, Mr. Chairman, I don't know what our, I, I asked the clerk about this. I, I guess I, I've been in situations before politically where they did provide a phone for, for the use of the, uh, agency. So I'd just like to know what the commission thinks about that, because I don't want the, uh, I don't want to have the emails or phone calls on my personal phone any longer. I think there's a problem there. Already been seen that there's a problem there. And so, uh, uh, I'd like to, I'd like to be able to do that. And I think that the county probably should, should authorize that. So that's a thought for everybody. The, uh, other issue is that I'm having is, is, is any votes taken now by the current commission that will be binding on the next commission? I'm concerned about that. It's not that I'm concerned about you, Mr. Frill. I think you've done a great job. You were a good chairman. I just think that, uh, I know we had an issue when we, when we had an election and you got elected as chairman. And I think other people thought they were gonna be elected as chairman. So I don't know what, I don't know what, uh, our current chairman's thought on that is. But I think that if, if you're gonna vote on something that might bind a fu- future commission in that regard, that it should be left to the future commission to make the decision, just like we did when you got elected. Now with respect to these boards, I think the airport board, I think the doctor's expiring. I don't think he's, he's served his two terms. And statutorily, that means that then when he's done with those two terms, we pick a, a person to take that job. So, uh, if you wanna call it political, if you wanna call it statutory, whatever you wanna call it, I'm, I'm putting that out there for the, the thought process, cause I don't even know who wants to run for chairman. I've said that I don't, I wouldn't mind being a deputy chairman and learning how to do it, uh, or a vice chairman. But, um, I think that who, I think that election should be among the new commissioners. As much as you, as all of the work you've done, uh, Mr. Frill, that's, that's something I think that should be done by any new commissioner. With respect to the board appointments, uh, I think anything new coming up like that should be done by the new commission. And I, it's just, it's just my opinion. Now, whether it's statutorily required or not, I haven't looked into it. Uh, Mr. Nicolason's pretty adept at doing that. And so I just wanna kinda follow the statutes as well as we can. And to, um, have a, uh, a commission that, uh, works together. And my last comment is, is, uh, I coached hockey here in Casper for 15 years. And my last team was the high school team. And we had one really good player that was just far superior to everybody. And, uh, but he would never pass the puck. And as a result, we got beat all the time. Finally, when I went to his dad and his mother and everything and him, and he became a team player, we won the largest amateur hockey tournament in the United States down in Colorado Springs. Because he started being a team player. And he was great. And he was the captain of the team. And so I've learned, I've learned that lesson over the years, that if you have a full bore commission of all five commissioners, they're all fully informed, they all say what they wanna say. They're all heard, uh, everybody's comfortable. Be that what it may. But the whole team gets to play. You know, the, I couldn't bench that kid and wouldn't have. But i- in essence, when he, when he hogged the puck the whole time, the other kids really didn't get to play. So what I'm hoping is, is that, uh, that's a lesson I've learned from team sports that, you know, I was never good enough to be on a team. So I had to learn it by being a coach. And it paid ve- very good dividends.
Commissioner North.
It sounds like we're gonna get caught pretty quick. So, um, I do agree a hundred percent that we've got a lot of roads in the county that we need to get taken care of and get them recorded accordingly, so we don't have to worry about that. And I do think that's a priority that the county needs to take. I think we need to figure out a way to get a little better communication sometimes between, not just our, uh, department heads, but also elected officials. I think there's, there seems to be a, have been a gap. I'm not sure exactly what the complete process should be. But I definitely think that we need to, to work on the communication as far as getting stuff into the packets. You know, that's, that's something that it gives us time to look through. And if we have questions about things to get it, and I'm not, I'm not picking on you Heather. I'm saying this across the board, you know, cause there's, if there's stuff in there that we don't understand, if we've got time ahead of time, you know, to look at, it's just like, uh, with planning and zoning. One of the things we, in previous commissions, we always had all that information at least two to three weeks out before we heard it. That gave us a lot of time to go out. If we, if we needed to go out and look at something, we had that time to go do it before we actually heard it before the public and we could actually get eyes on it and, and see what was actually there. And I, I think that was something that was good. Because we do have that opportunity to see things a little bit better. But other than that, you know, I'm, I'm glad that we, I'm glad that we have a a new building official. And, uh, hopefully we can get that, take a little load off of Jared here and then so he doesn't have to worry about it. And hopefully we can get a, a planner here before too much longer to, and get that so that legal compartment can work on legal issues of things instead of having to do a lot of extracurricular things. So.
Heather, when was Jared appointed as acting temporary planner, assistant supervisor?
I don't remember exactly. I think it was March or April.
Now that we're six months-ish down the road, um, it, it, uh, it seems to me to be maybe time to ask you as the department head, if, if we're getting to a point where y- your office needs him to be spending more time as your deputy, um, and less time as in this position. I think he's doing a good job. But that's not what he hired on to be. And I hate a status quo just driven out of necessity, um, if it doesn't work for him or you. So whether you wanna speak to it now or get with us offline, um, that's on my mind. And my feeling is he's not compelled to continue in that position just cause we can't fill it. Fill the, the planner position. And so I, I don't know if you wanna speak to it now or if you wanna speak to him and then w- we have maybe a, a conversation. But I, I think just because it's a difficult market, a difficult position, competitive market to, you know, for, for a planner. Um, I don't wanna put him or you or our legal department and therefore our county in a bad situation.
I, I think it would be best for me to speak with him and then we could, um, address the commission on, once we've had a chance to, to, to speak about it.
Okay. Uh, Michelle on Friday sent us a columbarium, um, or forwarded to us the columbarium quote. This is for the engraving. There are two options. One would be on the side of the columbarium itself, which would cost $975, which includes design and engraving. The other would be a, um, gray granite slant, um, on the ground. The cost of that would be $2,625. Which inclu- includes the design, engraving, the delivery and setting it. Uh, she did s- give us a picture of the slanted, um, monument. Commissioners, would it be great if we could make a decision today on, a decision tonight on which way we're gonna go on that engraving? This is the one, um, I, I think we're all aware, kind of the general statement and philosophy. Any thoughts? My preference would be for the one on the side of the columbarium.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Commissioner Frill, you're nodding. You okay with that?
I'm great with it.
Commissioner Laird. Alright, so what I'd like to do is, uh, see if, um, Heather, I'm gonna see if you and Michelle can work to something, um, whether it's on the agenda or not, but, but we ought to act on it tonight. Uh, and I don't know if that's a consent agenda item or what, but it's only 975 bucks. And, and if we can move forward on that, that'd be great. Commissioner Frill, I'm gonna throw you under the bus a little bit. I can't remember where we're at on the columbarium. It seemed like we were waiting for the city and the concrete engineering design or something like that.
Correct. And so now I've got, uh, I talked to Garrett this morning. Garrett and Randy Norville from the city. Parks are going to get together to get that poured, things were coming up on winter. And, uh, so that's in the works now of getting them together, get it poured. Been in touch with Doug, uh, Douglas from the columbarium place. Basically sitting on the back of a trailer, ready to get out here. So it's, it's us at this point, holding it up. So once we get that foundation poured, he can get out here, get it craned in place and we're good to go.
And when you mean us, it's more like government, but not necessarily county government?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, well, thanks for staying on top of that. I know there's only so much we, we can do. But that would take care of, uh, the columbarium. There was a request for a letter of support from Glenn Haas, um, on the, um, pathways back in September, I think they s- or was it in October? He sent us, uh, September, he sent us letters of support from 20, entities and or governments and or organizations. This is again, this is the Pathways National Heritage Area, um, provided us with his report. And then provided us with a notice that they had gone ahead and submitted it and are, I think, waiting to hear back. Um, transmittal letter's been sent to National Park Service. That was October 9th last week. He sent that to us. Um, if we wanted to do a letter of support, we oughta do it. It's maybe not necessary at this point, but, uh, I, I just wanted to close the loop on that. Any thoughts on whether we do it, how we do it, if we have anybody else come in and, um, Glenn, Mr. Haas, uh, or Mr. Lovejoy, and then people from the public. What is the commission, what's the commission's pleasure? Commissioner North.
I personally don't have any problem with it because the areas that they're talking about that they're identifying are all right off designated highways and roads like that. They're already public places. Basically, all they're talking about doing is putting things on there. They eliminated the stuff that concerned me to start with, which was a lot of the backro- backroads where you would have problems with trespass or people getting lost or not having cell service or something else. But everything that they're talking about now, um, is right off the paved roads. And so, you know, and a lot of it's right here in the Casper area, immediate Casper area. So I really don't have much, I don't have an issue with it.
Anyone, anyone else, Commissioner Laird?
Uh, just a br- The issue with the public is that these two guys are not from Wyoming.
Rather, it's the Colorado thing.
So that's something I think, you know, I always am concerned with and, and I understand why people say that. And we've had some come in here that were fairly strong in that regard and, because I know that Colorado people look a little different. You know, somebody showed me a, this is an aside, Mr. Chairman, somebody showed me a billboard. They took a picture of a billboard going up to Denver. I think it's on the Wyoming side on some rancher's hand. It says, "You're about to enter, uh, the country of Venezuela." And, uh, it's a big red and black sign. And, uh, it's kinda how I guess our, some of our people see Colorado. So, it's not relevant to this, of course, but I thought it was interesting. it's not relevant to this, of course, but I thought it was interesting.
I'll get in touch with Mr. Haas and thank him for keeping us in the loop. And asking first if he still wants a letter of support. And then if we prepare one, let the commission take a look at it. And maybe, you know, maybe we have some public comment on that at, at some point too. I know Commissioner North, I agree, some of those issues in my mind are no longer issues or that, that were concerns or maybe no longer concerns. But I think for a lot of people, maybe there's still some uncertainty and we, we can look at getting them on a work session in the next couple of meetings. I don't, I don't think it'll be on the 5th, but maybe our second November or first December meeting. Alright, speaking of letters of support, Eric Schlitt with oh, I guess Breakthrough Ventures has asked for a commissioner letter of support for Advanced Casper's proposal. He did send a draft, not necessarily for the commission, but something that, would you give one to, to the ladies over there? I guess something he sent to other people. It's, it's very generic. The issue once again is my first question was, what's the deadline? Or when's the grant application due? And it's due October 28th, but they want letters by October 18th. So once, and I just got this Friday at 4:40 in the afternoon. So once again, on short notice. And I think it's a question of if we want to make, I almost cursed, Commissioner Laird. If we want to make stuff happen, we could act on this and try and work through a letter of support that would be acceptable to us. If we want to say, listen, if you need something in, you know, less than a week, a lot of times that's just not a realistic timeframe. So I'm willing to go either way. I do think that there could be some real merit to helping small entrepreneurs have more facilities and, and tools to build their business. That's money for a community, that's jobs for a community. And it's something we can be proud of and maybe keep our kids either here in Wyoming or come back to Wyoming. So I get what Advanced Casper and Mr. Schlitt are trying to do. But here we are with the deadline. So you've had that letter in front of you for a minute or two. Maybe you just have some general comments. Commissioner Frill?
Well, my comment on it is there are things that come in front of us that we're not going to be given a lot of time to make a decision about. However, I think that in situations like this, this looks like this would be an initiative that's going to allow for technology and, and whatnot to grow here. You know, just because you get it a few days before it's due, I think if we just sit here and say, no, you didn't give me enough time, we shoot ourselves in the foot of advancing this community or this county. So my opinion would be that, I, I, I know Eric really well. I know that he wouldn't come to us with something that is not in Advanced Casper themselves. It is not something that would be worthwhile. So I support even on short notice support moving forward with this.
Mr. Chairman, is this going to cost us any money that you know of?
No, it won't. I'm not aware of any financial, fiscal or non-fiscal obligations or commitments.
Well, it won't bind us to anything?
To my knowledge, we would not be a party to any sort of grant agreement. It would be Advanced Casper.
Thank you.
Commissioner, sorry, Commissioner North.
I don't like having things dropped on me at the last minute without any other details. I mean, this doesn't really give me much detail. I would have preferred them have made an appointment to come before us in the work session today and talk about this if it was so important. I, I'm not saying that it's not a good deal, but when it's, when it's due by Friday, it's it's kind of difficult to, to say yea or nay. I'm all for bringing stuff to our county. I'm all for bringing businesses, but I want to know a little bit more about what they're talking about than generalizations. And that's what I see in here. I mean, it's, I don't see any, I don't see any details. We don't have any details and just now getting it, I just I have a hard time with supporting something that I don't have more information on.
Okay, I appreciate the comments. I am I, I echo some of what you said, Commissioner North, and some of what you said, Commissioner Frill. So I am making a couple proposed edits to this draft and I'm going to pass it up and down the table here. And, and we can see if there are three or more votes or, or would be three or more votes to approve this. So if, give me just another minute. So walking through some ideas for some minor modifications. I could suggest having the first sentence, we say, on behalf of the Nitroda County Board of County Commissioners, I write to express our strong support. Leave the rest of that intact. The next paragraph. And in the, the next two paragraphs where it says, will empower or will advance, will help. We could put should or will hopefully, because we know less about whatever this is than we would like. I think that's somewhat of a stylistic change, but I think it's also not, not maybe carrying the banner for the thing that we really don't know that much about. So the, that paragraph would be the Raise Rural Wyoming Initiative should empower aspiring technology. And then the la, the second to last paragraph, the Raise Rural Wyoming Initiative will hopefully address the unique challenges. EDA funds in the next sentence should help. And then further on in that sentence, development, training and advance, instead of that will advance. So those are the kinds of things that would make it a little more palatable for me. And if you want to see any of those.
Mr. Chairman, this grant, who would the money go to? Do you know?
I assume it would go to Advanced Casper.
And what would they, do you know how much it's for or anything like that?
No.
And what they intend to use the money for?
Well, I think it says there, especially in that second to last paragraph.
I, I read that, but it seemed kind of general to me. Maybe I just thought maybe you have some other knowledge about it.
I don't have any other knowledge, Commissioner Laird. And, you know, and, and if we're not comfortable moving forward, that's fine. If you have other specific edits, please specifically let us know.
Mr. Chairman, I know in other situations, we've been very careful about putting something in there that we're not responsible to pay any money. I don't know if you can edit that in or you feel comfortable with that or even how you feel about it. But if it's something that doesn't cost us any money, we're not bound by anything and it's Vance Casper thinks it's going to help them. Vance Casper, why? Sounds like, fine to me, but it's so general. I don't understand, I don't understand any particular points.
I don't know that this kind of letter lends itself very well to a disclaimer, disavowal of financial liability. I certainly think that kind of communication between us and Advanced Casper is very reasonable. I would suggest we try and call Mr. Schlitt right now.
Go ahead.
Then if he can answer some of the questions, it might give us a little more comfort level. Let me, let me go ahead and do that first. Let me do that. So he didn't answer, we could call Justin Farley perhaps, or?
Here's what I'm going to say, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to leave it in your hands.
Quick. Right now, we're looking at this letter for the your proposal for the U, US Economic Development Administration for the grant. Can, I'm going to put you on speaker. Can you give us a little bit more information about that? We've got some commissioners that are wondering about, you know, whether we, if there's any money that the county has to put in and then some more details behind it than what's in the letter.
Over to my truck.
Hello? Okay, you there? Can you hear me?
I am.
Okay. So I got you on speaker and you got you on the overhead. So what, what questions does the commission have?
Hi, Justin, Peter Nicolason, how you doing?
Hey, Peter, how are you?
I'm okay. On Friday, Eric sent us a request for a support of Advanced Casper's Raise Rural Wyoming Initiative. We really don't have any background on it. So can you give us just 60 seconds of, or whatever, a short bit on what it is? And then I think Commissioner Laird and maybe Commissioner North have a couple of questions.
Sure. So just from the 10,000 foot view, since there is no more impact 307 doing startup challenges. Advanced Casper did a startup challenge. Of course, we have Advanced Casper also administers and participates in the state's still only organized angel investment group, which is Breakthrough 307. So you have, you have this ecosystem of the very, very, very beginning with some funding and then angel investment. And this next application is for bigger checks, for more mature companies. And that is what that application is for through the EDA.
So my, my question is simple and, and I'm, I'm still not quite grasping it. So how much money are you applying for? Who gets the money and what exactly are they going to do with the money that they get?
So we're applying for roughly three quarters of a million dollars from the EDA. And that is going to go towards some operational expenses for this new fund. And then, and, and I say it's a new fund, it's an existing fund. They've already deployed about a million dollars. They engage with the state as well when the state got into the venture capital realm. So the EDA grant is just simply to shore up that ecosystem so that our Wyoming companies can get all the funding that they need in Wyoming. Right? So that, that they don't have to go to Rocky Mountain Venture Capital and they don't have to go to Silicon Pular or they don't have to go to Silicon Valley, for that matter, to get those bigger checks.
Will the county have any liability if we sign this letter?
Negative. No, and we're not asking, they are not asking for any money from the county. It's simply, it's simply support for, again, that ecosystem that I just tried to just explain right there.
Do you need to have the county do that to get the money?
It certainly would help, right? It's a federal grant, so that the, the more solidarity and the more support that you can show, the better your chances. We, we, we applied for this grant four, four years ago and, and received funding to start to help facilitate also the Breakthrough 307, create Goose's position at Advanced Casper. It's basically that same thing, but on another, a different level as far as the check writing. And, and that is, that's only come available because the state is participating in venture capital. And they structured this new fund to get state support, which they've already have. And the federal part of this is simply to support all of, all of that action, right? So it, you know, Chanel will get some dollars toward her salary for making capital calls. They'll pay some reduced amount of rent for some office space, things like that. It's, it's operational.
Thank you.
You bet.
We, we may have another question here in a second. We did try to reach Eric, but we couldn't. So thanks for being available and willing, being willing to speak to us on the spot. Commissioner North, did you have any questions or other things you'd like answered?
So Justin, you're saying that this is basically just for operational setup? I, I, I'm not quite sure I follow all that. If you're saying that. If you're saying that you want to make it so that the companies don't have to go to other places to get funding, you need to be a little bit more detailed about that, if you don't mind.
No, that, you are absolutely correct, it is simply for operations, and it's to, there is no, we're certainly not investing any federal dollars, nor are we investing any county or city dollars, it's all private sector dollars that the state matches, and this EDA grant, I believe the entire grant is a million and a half, but the other 750,000 is, is made up of in-kind or personal contributions that have already made, that have already been put into place, but yeah, the EDA part of that is operational only.
So, it's not, does it, or does, does it not go to some of the startup entrepreneurs?
Not the EDA part of that.
Okay.
No, the only, the only monies that make it to the companies are private dollars, and then some match from the state through their new VC push with Finnegan and Burt.
And the Raise Rural Wyoming Initiative, is that the label given by the state in this, this program, or is that something else?
So, the Raise Rural Wyoming?
Initiative.
Yeah. I'm not entirely clear as to where that came from, but there, again, there's only one organized Angel Investment Group, Breakthrough 307, this fund is going to be probably the only one of its kind in Wyoming as well, and so, we're reaching out to all of the state, or they're reaching out to all of the state to get support for that. So, yeah, I think that that checks a box probably in that federal grant application, that you're, you know, it's rural, even they could make the case that all Wyoming is rural. I know that they're looking for support from the tribes, they're looking for support from all, all corners of the state, so that might just, they might have named that just to encompass all that.
All right, yeah, I'm not sure if this Raise Rural Wyoming Initiative is, it says Build the Scale Grant Program for the Raise Rural Wyoming Initiative.
Yeah, and the Build the Scale Grant is the EDA grant, that's, that's the, that's the name of the grant that they're going for.
Yeah, it says Providing Comprehensive Resources Mentorship and Funding Opportunities. Okay, anything else, Justin, you'd like us to know, or commissioners, any other questions I guess I'm not hearing anything else, so thank you very much, Justin, we appreciate it.
Oh, hey, thank you for the phone call, glad I, I hope I didn't confuse things. If you have any other questions, just give me a shout.
Very good, thanks.
Thank you.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure for a letter of support being sent out on this?
I still remain in support of, I, I know what they're, what direction they're headed with things over there, and if some people haven't been involved with Advanced Casper, the incubator, or any of that stuff over there, then this would seem probably a little bit Greek to you, but I know what their mission is, and where they're headed with this, and so, I'm behind it. It's a letter of support for a grant that costs us nothing, but will help them operationally.
So, you recommend, excuse me, you recommend we send a letter, is that it?
I do.
Thank you.
You recommend that too, Mr. Chairman?
I, if I don't have to cast a vote, what are your thoughts? Are you in favor of it?
I'm going to rely on what Mr. Frill said, because I don't, I truly, I don't feel like I know enough about it, but I respect his viewpoints.
All right, Commissioner North?
Because I'm on the fence. I, I just don't know operational, and then I read down here, and it says these funds are going to support challenging startups and stuff like that, and that's not operational. So, I, I don't know, I still don't feel comfortable, I don't feel like I know enough about this right now, so.
All right, well, I guess I would feel that the, that there's, there's no harm in supporting this, that there could be great benefit to people, entrepreneurs, your kids, my kids, you know, people with great ideas. So, I would be in favor of taking out the two middle paragraphs that discuss the details of Raise Rural Wyoming Initiative, which has specificity that I don't feel I have the background to speak to one way or the other, and leave in the first paragraph, and then the last paragraph or last sentence, "Please give Advanced Casper's proposal the highest consideration for funding." So, that would be the letter that I would sign, if a majority of the commissions for it. So, Commissioner Laird, would you be for that?
Yes.
All right, so then that's the letter of support that we'll do. And if people want us to do more than that on the next deal, then they can visit with some of us. And now Commissioner Milne is the liaison, and he's of course not here today, liaison to Advanced Casper. So, that could be also some of the reason why we're less informed on this than maybe we'd like. So, I will sign that letter as modified. We talked about pathways. Judy Jones sent a couple emails to the commission, I visited with her, I've also visited with legal counsel. My recommendation is that we do not, now that an application for solar permits been filed, we let the process go per our regulations, and not have kind of intervening meetings, and the planning commission not having intervening meetings. Now, what we know is that, under advice of counsel, the planning commission is going to meet again to consider some additional matters in November. I forget the date of that, at which time, people, including Judy Jones, are going to have a chance to speak, so she's aware of that, and then it will come before us, I believe, December 3rd. And then we will hear from the applicant, and, and Mrs. Jones, and, and anyone else. I know the three-minute versus five-minute thing that, that she complained about, I was advised that that was instituted not at this last meeting, but one of the previous, when there was a lot, there were a lot of members of the public, and that was a concern this time, too. I thought that she as a potentially affected neighboring landowner ought to have more than three minutes, and so, that's where that stands. I just wanted to bring the commission up to date on that. Any questions, comments, or concerns with that? All right, then I didn't have anything else, unless there's something else, then we'll adjourn until 5 o'clock. Okay?
That gives me just enough time to take my dog home.
Thank you.